All right. Good afternoon. We'll call the meeting to order. Thanks for joining us. Those of you joining us remotely, thanks for joining us. I appreciate the council members making it to this meeting on such short notice. And we'll just proceed with with the agenda, which is hearing from Patty Sheta, our consultant, on the on the assessment and the profile we're trying to put together of city manager candidates. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Nick, council members. Thank you so much for the opportunity to work with you and be here tonight and taking time out of your schedule over the last week to really engage in this process. Before we get started, how many of you have built or remodeled a home? Okay. Imagine going to a builder and saying, you know what, I want a, I want a ranch home. In fact, make it three bedroom, two bath. Because everybody knows what a ranch home looks like. That's three bedroom and two bath, right? We should just be able to assume that it's going to turn out the right way. Yet, when people hire people on their team, they do this all the time. They make the assumption that when I say city manager and you say city manager, we all mean the same thing. When I say leadership and you say leadership, we all mean the same thing. And that's where the wheels come off the bus. So when someone doesn't work out in a role, it's usually because of one of three things. The key stakeholders weren't aligned on expectations in the beginning. Number two, people don't use psychometric tools to figure out a person's drive and what they will have a drive to do in a job, not just what they can or have done in the past. Or three, your key stakeholders aren't aligned and trying to help the person be as successful as possible. So again, thank you for the opportunity to work with you on this really critical role. And we're going to go through this process and and talk about where we are today and where we're going to go going forward. So you have a couple handouts in front of you. One is, it's a PDF of the PowerPoint. The slides are incredibly small. I don't know about you, but I can't really read it that closely. But I wanted to make sure that you had a point of reference as we were going through this. There's obviously a place to the right to make notes if you would like to do so. Everything that's going to be on here is also going to be up on the screens for you to view. The second document, which we will go through in detail, is the job profile. So if you could set that aside and hold that thought, we'll get to that in just a second. We have a lot of content to get through tonight, and I want to be respectful of your time. So I'm going to ask that if you have questions about a theory or a concept I'm talking about, please stop me and ask those questions. If you have a idea on something that should be different, especially as it gets to the profile, I ask that you make a note and we'll cover all of those at the end. I promise there's a method to my madness, and I'm hoping that any questions that you have along the way, I'm going to be able to answer at some point just in the presentation we put together. Sound good? Okay, very good. Well, let's get started. And I'm just. Here we go. All right. So the goal on the agenda today, first, the goal is alignment on expectations and the job profile. That is the goal by the time we're done with our meeting today. The agenda that we're going to follow is I'm going to share with you the process and the assessment overview. I'm going to share with you just some general observations that I've had and and things that I think you need to consider. We're going to review in depth the job profile. We'll talk about the next steps. And then at the end, we'll have an open forum to gain that alignment on the job profile. So my goal is to have at least 10 to 15 minutes at the end that we can have that conversation and hopefully by the end, have that alignment on what we're going to do going forward. So the process is a three step process. We're right now in the final stages of that first step. And the first step again is gaining that alignment. How do we do that? Through interviews with the council, through a survey with the leadership team, doing some research on my own. And then also, you know, just pulling all of that together and presenting it to you. So so far, we are right on schedule. So let's just do a quick review of how I gathered this information. City council, I asked that you all complete an assessment. So you have a point of reference on a tool that we're going to be using with the city manager candidates. So we'll talk about that just a little bit later. I also conducted about eight hours of interviews with all of you. And the questions were, help me define success in two years. What would make you say, wow, they're really successful? Or man, that person missed the mark. I also asked, what competencies do you want to see continued? Often, we take what the current person is doing for granted, and I want to always make sure that we pause to say, what makes a current manager really great at what they do? Also, knowing that the future looks different than what we've had in the past, is there anything different that you want in the future? I had the same set of questions with the leadership team. There just were a lot more of them. So I asked that they do an online survey. So as an online survey, I have seven pages of single spaced, 10 point font survey results that I combed through and gathered to make sure that I I heard what they all said would be important and needed going forward. So again, many of the same type of questions, except what's currently working well and should continue. So this is more from a process and and how the city government is managed. What are the greatest challenges facing the city of Marion? And what does that impact on the team? And what's important, most important, most important for competencies and talents needed in the future? So I just want to do a quick overview based on some of my observations that I want you to be mindful of as we're going through this process. Most of this is based on my 24, 25 years of talent management and coaching. Been doing this for a really long time. I had the opportunity to see people at their absolute best and to see when they've really struggled. And often, it's the same person. It's just, are they in a role that matches their unique talents? I've been in roles where I've been at my best and when I've really struggled. I'm often brought in to coach people when they're really struggling. So I love getting in on the front end so we can figure this out, so we have a smooth process on the back end. So many of these observations are based on that. This is the most important decision you'll make as a council. And a couple of you mentioned that during your interviews. There's this, there's this weight, this gravity of, we have to get this right. And I want to make sure we have the expectation that right doesn't mean perfect. No one is perfect. I'm not perfect. You're not perfect. Kirsten's not perfect. Lon's not perfect. We're trying to figure out realistically what is most important. So again, I appreciate that you have the gravity of the importance of this. Just be careful it doesn't tip over to, we have to make it perfect. Because we'll both be disappointed. I've created a job profile, and the goal is to identify what is most important for this person to have in this role. It's a whole laundry list of things we want. But when you really look at the role, what is most important? We're also going to create a candidate profile. I always call this creating a fictitious character, right? If if we could just create the this perfect profile, candidate profile, what are we looking for? And then we're going to benchmark the candidates to identify the candidate strengths, identify their struggles, what are their weaknesses, what are they just not good at, right? And then what are the strategies that we can put in place around their struggles? You've worked with people. You've probably even been this person yourself where no matter how hard you try, it's just hard to do that thing. Like, I'm great at this, and I'm just not great at this thing over here. Everybody has that. It's called a weakness for a reason. And so we need to put strategies around that to help compensate for it. The problem we usually have is that we try to make that thing better. And you end up just offsetting their strengths. So keeping that in mind, we want to identify what are the strengths that are most important, figure out the weaknesses or struggles, and how do we put strategies around that? Does that all make sense? Yeah, okay. Your responsibility is to position the city manager for success. Whenever I'm working with someone and we're filling a position, that's your job. You know, how do we, how do we put something in place, have realistic expectations, and then just position that person for success? So that's, that's your number one job going forward. I did some research on this a few years ago, and it was just such a light bulb moment for me that we have to be mindful that at a city manager or a CEO or an executive level, there are only things only that person can do. There are certain things only that person can do at that level. Whether it's culture, whether it's leadership, whether it's vision, whatever it is, only that person at that top level can do that. And so I want you to think about that when we're tempted to pull that person into daily tasks or into the weeds or or ask them to do things that other people are very capable of doing. Because no one else can do those things that that senior level person is supposed to be doing. So again, just these are just things I've noticed over the years that can work against someone and them being successful. So I just want to put that out there. Always keep in mind of what only they can do and how do we keep as much of their time at that level as possible? Another way of looking at it is, make sure you're getting what you're paying for. If you're paying someone X dollars, but now you're pulling him into work that is half or a third or a fourth of that, you're not getting your return on that person, that investment in that person. So again, just a few things to keep in mind as you're going forward with this. I want to point out a few complexities that may be obvious to most people, but I think they're important to articulate. Complexity number one is this position. So here you have the city manager, right? Who has 16 people reporting to them. 16 people of very diverse technical aptitudes. You have everything from the fire chief, the police chief, to HR, to IT, to engineering, to an attorney. That's a very diverse group. And some may say, yep, that's what they're signing up for, suck it up, buttercup. I just, I understand that. I just, I think it's important that we keep in mind that first level of complexity. The second level is now you also have two indirects. So these are two people that you don't have, you can't really tell them what to do. The best you can do is hopefully influence them and hope that the person or or the group they report to is aligned with what you're trying to accomplish as well. So that's another level of complexity. And all of these people represent 250 people that are employed by the city. And they're not just in one building. They're spread out everywhere. So again, these are levels of a complexity that are important to note. If you have one leader who has a smaller leadership team and everybody's in one building, that's very different than something like this. And let's add a little more to that, just for fun. This person reports to not only the mayor, but also the six city council members who represent the interests of the whole city of Marion. All of these people have different ideas. All of these people really have probably different things they think are most important. All of these people have a different idea of what this city manager should be. And so keeping that in mind, when you're really frustrated with somebody in this role, I think will be helpful in being their partner to help them be successful. Oh, and one more thing. They need to be they need to be cognizant of what's going on at the local, regional, and state level, all while working in a fishbowl. Everything they do is open for everyone to see. And I purposely put his head right above her, his head, her head, right above the waterline. So again, this is one of the levels of complexity that I think is important as we're looking to fill this role. The second level of complexity is the growth challenges. Some people call it a high class problem. Right? You have a high class problem in Marion. You have some amazing things going on. The growth has been phenomenal. At the end of the day, it can still be a problem, and it's still a challenge. And research would tell you that there are certain breaking points in the number of employees. This is from Harvard Business Review, right? They did this research, and they said, when you hit about 3 to 350 employees, your basic organizational design that you've had in the past that you just kept piling on doesn't work anymore. You have to take an Etch A Sketch and just shake it and start over. It it needs to be radically different, especially if you're going to continue to grow. The second breaking point is with your technology and your systems and your processes, and that happens usually around 500. The things you could do in pivot tables and Excel and and all of those things don't work anymore. It's just that level of complexity. So the reason I'm bringing this up is we need to be mindful that these things need to be built into your timelines and your expectations for who's ever in this role. The speed you were able to grow the city and make things happen in the past just become more complex. So this may be very obvious to all of you, and I apologize if it is. It's just, I want the record to reflect that these are a couple of things that you need to be mindful of as you're going forward with this position. I think someone said, we need someone who can continue the growth at the same pace we've had. And that's a bar that I'm not sure anyone can achieve. So again, it's just that that mindfulness, that things get more complex as you get bigger. As I was going through the survey and the interview responses, I've those seven pages of 10 point font, single line, in all the interviews. Here were some of the things that came up, and I've and I've bucketed them. We want someone who is a great communicator to engage, inspire the team, and respond quickly to email and requests. We want someone who's highly visible in the community with their teams at the local, regional, and state level. We want someone who's politically savvy without being political and confident and humble. We want someone who sets a culture of trust and collaboration and holds people accountable. We also want someone who is calm under pressure with high emotional intelligence, who understands all the areas yet stops short of micromanaging, ensures the city is up to date and in compliance with regulation, laws, and ordinances, maintains focus on the long term and open to new opportunities, keeps all key stakeholders informed in current issues and potential big issues, maintains budget and his staff to ensure completion of projects on time, bring new ideas while respecting what makes the city of Marion special. This is usually the time I pull out my magic wand and the batteries are dead, and I'm saying that I I appreciate this is what we want. It is a wish list, and we need to pick what in here is most important and what's realistic and what is most important, especially at that senior level. So keeping all of that in mind. So that leads to complexity. Number three, people are human. And there are three different categories we're going to look at when we hire someone for this role. Number one, what's the resume? What have they done in the past that might be an indication, can they do this job in the future? So we want that experience, education, all of that. We want to know that they have high values. It'd be horrible to hire somebody into this role that doesn't have those values that that you need in this role. And number three is just my icon illustration of the psychometric assessment tool that I use. And it just really breaks down what are the personality traits that are most important? And a realization that if you want someone who's agreeable and approachable and collaborative and all of those things, they may not be as assertive as you need them to be. So again, we have to figure out what's most important. I'm not going to go through that in detail. We'll have a training on that later if you want it. But these are the three components and just keeping in mind the chances that you're going to find someone who's absolutely perfect doing all of those things is not realistic, just to be blunt. So let's go into having all of that as a as a backdrop. I want to go through what I've put together as a job profile. And the goal again tonight is to get alignment on on what you're looking for going forward. The reason why I call it a job profile is that's usually what you create at an executive level. It focuses more on the what and the outcomes, whereas a job description tends to get into the weeds on the how and the task. So I appreciate that you've you've done some work. Kirsten's done some work. You've all provided or some of you provided some edits. And I did take that into consideration when I did this job profile. Another challenge with a job description that starts to get circulated is that edits start to pile on. And I like to, okay, let's pull that apart and and put it into categories that 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 makes sense and and work together. So this job profile is based again on the interviews, based on the survey from the leadership team, based on my some of my experience, and also did some research on city managers and work I've done before with city managers. And then also, again, including that job description and edits, read through all of those to see, you know, what needs to be pulled into this as well. So I'm going to pull apart each part of that job profile and talk about it. This, for those of you who can't possibly read everything that's on this handout, it's actually here. This is in better font. Okay? Bigger font, I should say. Any questions so far before we dig into this? Or comments or thoughts? Yes?
Just a comment. And I was perhaps substantially late to the party to understand that the span of control is one to 16 or one to 17. And that clearly works against a success profile for any individual that has to perform in that size of an organization with that span of control. So I I guess maybe just as some future think, I think we need to somehow address that through organizational design, which was one of the, one of the elements that you pointed out in one of the slides.
Right.
A long back growth or maturity curve. So anyway, I just was a little surprised with that. And as I say, I was late to having that awareness of that's where we were sitting specifically.
This is very typical in a high growth organization. It's very typical. It happens quite often. And that would probably be one of the first responsibilities of a city manager coming in. Because most city managers have an idea of how they would like to organize a team. And so, you know, bringing in your deputy as well will help with this. I know that's been part of the the thought process as well. So, yes.
So in your view, in your experience, what is a functional span of control that results in organizational success?
At this level, probably eight to 12 at most.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Any other questions before we dive further? Okay. Again, I'd ask that you make some notes as we're going through this. If you have questions or don't agree with something, I absolutely invite that. The goal at the end of tonight is to have that alignment. So but if you can make notes on this, maybe we're going to catch some of those questions as we go through it. Okay? All right. So the first part of the job profile, did you ever hear the people say, like, they had one job? That's what I'm trying to look for in that purpose of the role. Why does it exist? What is that one job that they just have to do masterfully? Well, at this level, it would seem, ensure that the city of Marion offers a sustainable, high quality of life for its residents and economic success for the business. There's a lot that goes into that. There's a lot of how that goes into that. But when we did our interviews and I said, tell me what success looks like, let's say, two or three years down the road, most of what was said bubbled up to this one line. So I'm going to ask that you you hold that thought, and then we're going to go into the next section, which is the job responsibilities, the measures of success. So I've broken this out into three different categories. The first category is vision and strategy. When you think of somebody at the most senior level of any organization, that's where they should be spending a significant amount of their time. Where are we going and how are we going to get there? So it's understanding the needs of the community, which is done through collaboration with the leadership team, the city council, and occasionally with the constituents. Again, trying to figure out where they should be spending most of their time. I'm assuming constituents are giving a lot of that feedback to you so they can get, so the city manager in theory should be getting a lot of that information through you and through their their leadership team. Develop and maintain key stakeholder partnerships at the local, regional, and state level to understand and proactively further the best interests of Marion. Actively participate and propose ideas with all key stakeholders in the development of the vision and strategic plan. We're not looking for someone to do this alone. My understanding is that vision and strategy is a collaborative effort. But you certainly need somebody at the at that level who's gathering a lot of information and bringing it to that table, into that discussion. The next section is about management, city government, leadership, and management. So those are two different concepts. So just going through this, create an environment that inspires high performance and team collaboration with a focus on serving and building trusting relationships with the community. The only reason why they exist, right, is is to take care of their community. Ensure the city executes on the agreed upon objectives and contractual obligations on time and on budget in a respectful and collaborative manner. Can't just push things through. Can't just be their own agenda. Hire quality team members and set expectations aligned with the strategy, performance, and policies. Ensure the team members have the training and guidance to effectively perform their responsibilities to meet their objectives. Assess priorities and provide ongoing forecasts to ensure the work to be completed is aligned with the overall staffing and financial levels. Effectively communicate with team to set expectations, ensure collaboration, and address employee questions and concerns with a balance of face to face meetings, electronic communication, and visibility in the various departments. This particular comment got a little more into the weeds than I would normally get into, telling people how to do it and not just the what. But it came out so often in the interviews and in the surveys that just having that balance of, you know, management by walking around and and being seen, that I thought it was important to put that in here as well, to set that as an expectation. Keep up to date on all laws and regulations that impact the city government and ensure communication and programs are in place for compliance. Direct the preparation of the budget and ensure proper administration, oversight, and periodic reporting to the city council. There is a lot more involved. But again, I'm trying to keep this at the at the what level. And depending on how big it is and how many direct reports the person has and all of those other things, the how can change quite often. The last section is, for lack of a better term, city council management. I didn't know what else to put. If you have a different word in there, I am very much open to that. But it really is, you know, that that level of complexity of managing a team and not just reporting to one person, but reporting to a whole council. So attend the council meetings and provide meaningful updates and information as needed. Apprise the city council on their legal requirements and responsibilities as well as issues that could impact their ability to successfully fulfill their obligations. Foster meaningful and trusting partnerships with the council members and bridge that communication and information between the council and the city government employees. It's a tough balancing act, but it's one they have to be masterful in. The next section, this, this is a template I use for every single job that I help to figure out, how can someone be successful? Because now this starts to get a little more specific as to what business relationships does this person have? And how much time should they be spending doing that? So if you look at the leadership team, the primary function is to provide direction, understand challenges, provide coaching, remove obstacles, and hold that team accountable. And they're doing that every day. That's a normal part of their job. The mayor, provide updates, answer questions, propose and collaborate on solutions. Guessing that's probably a couple times a week, see what's going on. The next is the city council. Again, provide updates, answer questions, propose and collaborate on solutions. My guess is that's maybe a weekly thing. It's not my guess. It's through some research. It's through some interviews. It's looking at some of those best practices. Regional partners. These are the people who are at your, you know, your superintendents, the mayors of other cities that are close by. What's going on at the regional level? Develop relationships, collaborate on mutually beneficial programs, getting ahead of it so you can have those partnerships and not just reach out for those partnerships when you need them. And that should probably be a weekly thing. Keep those relationships going. The legislators, collaborate and advocate for the city and the regional best interests. I apologize for the typo. It's, I believe it's correct on the handout, and it's not correct if you can read the little slides. But collaborate and advocate for the city and regional best interest. Make sure your voice is heard and you're not caught on the back end. Lastly, the constituents. This was a tough one, because I know I have an expectation that I see my mayor and I see the city manager, and I see him often. Again, the challenge is, how do we make sure they're spending most of their time in doing things only they can do? So it would seem that they need to be having that communication with their constituents on strategic objectives, major projects, community issues, or disasters. Maybe monthly, probably as needed. Last year was maybe more, right? But then also, the level, this position should be the level of appeal if it can't be resolved with a department. How do we get issues solved at the most appropriate level? And only the ones that are, that just can't be resolved, get floated up? The next section, I always like to ask, describe the most challenging aspect of this position. Like, what is the trickiest thing? Understanding and managing the expectations and needs of multiple key stakeholders to include, but not limited to, the diverse and changing city council. You may all love the city manager that's brought on board. If there are new city council members, how do we make sure they have the same expectation? By the way, I built that into the proposal, so we'll talk about that in a second. But also, the large and diverse direct reports, the regional partners, the regulators, and the constituents. This is an incredible balancing and communication position for this person to be in. I also like to look at, what is the mindset of the work? Where should they be focusing their time? And I have four different categories. And normally, most positions, we would only check two, maybe three boxes. The higher up you get, the more boxes that get checked. So the first one is, how much time should they spend on immediate needs, on like the task list stuff? Best practice would be maybe fifteen percent. The next category, how much time should be spent on that three- to six-month deadline? Those three- to six-month projects? Twenty-five percent is what I'm gauging based on all four categories. You have great city leadership team members, who I'm sure can handle, can and do handle most of that work. The next level would be, how much time should they spend on that twelve-plus-month deadline or work? Now we're cranking that up to about thirty percent. They should be looking a year out, and that's where they should be spending their time. And the last one is the future direction of the organization. That's thirty percent. They should be thinking about what's happening, you know, down the road, twelve-plus months out, maybe four to five, ten years out. If this person isn't doing it, nobody is. And the more the person gets pulled into those first three categories, the less time they have to spend on the future. The last piece is, based on all of that, assuming I got most of that right, now we're looking at, what are the qualifications? And often, people gravitate toward, I need this number of years of experience, or this is an absolute requirement. The more absolutes you put into place, the smaller your candidate pool. And I'm not saying you should settle. I like to have a bigger candidate pool so I can have some choices. So proven and successful city management experience in a high-growth urban city. I can't imagine stepping into this role without that background. The learning curve for this job, you need to be mindful of that. And if somebody doesn't have some of that experience of high growth, higher population, you need to build into your expectation the learning curve, because it will be much longer. So is that three years? Is that five years? Is that ten years? Again, I'm not as concerned about the number of years, because that doesn't say if they did it well. I want proven experience, preferably with a sixty-plus-thousand population. Because again, that level of complexity, that one chart that I showed you, when you get to that three hundred employees or five hundred employees, that's a whole different ballgame than if you have fifty or a hundred employees. Totally different ballgame. BA in public administration or related field from an accredited college/university. Masters, I think would be a bonus. My recommendation is that you make it preferred. Maybe somebody's working on it. Maybe they just started. Maybe they have twenty years of really great experience that negates that masters. So that's what I would recommend. Financial acumen to understand and provide strategic financial direction. They need to be a CPA or an accountant? Probably not. But they need to understand financials well enough that they can look at it and go, something's not right. We're going down the wrong path. Critical thinking to diagnose complex issues and propose logical, often innovative, solutions. This takes a special mindset to be able to pull all of those things apart and figure out how to put it all back together again. This, to me, is one of the most critical skills. An adaptive communication style to meet the needs of the intended audience, from an exchange of information to explain a complex issue, to persuading or selling an idea or concept, to addressing difficult situations and resolving conflict at all those different levels. Can a person adapt their style? And a visionary and strategic mindset for long-term success. There are some people wired for quick wins, right? What's a quick win? And at this level, with the growth of this community, having someone who's more long-term and thoughtful in planning will serve you well. The last piece is the interpersonal skills that foster collaboration and accountability. I will tell you, I heard over and over from the leadership team that there's been a lot of collaboration, that the silos, there aren't silos, but the team's really coming together. And that's pretty unusual. I don't see that very often. So making sure that someone has those interpersonal skills that will continue that will be a really good thing. Okay. Couple more slides, and then we're going to wrap up and we'll open it up for that discussion.
Daddy?
Yes?
Could you cycle back one slide, please? So the header of that slide, the more requirements versus preferred, the more limiting your candidate pool. Can you just give a little additional color commentary on that?
Yeah. If you said, you know what, we need, we require someone to have ten years of experience, now you're going to, all of these candidates that maybe would have been considered, you're going to drop that back. If you said a masters is required, that's another cut, right? So I'm not saying settle. I'm saying, open it up and put a few things preferred, so it gives you that flexibility. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. So this assessment tool that the city of Marion is using and that you all took, gives you the opportunity to say, based on this job profile, we're now going to create a candidate profile. What are we looking for? And this is just a sample. I'm not, I haven't done the work yet to say what should that profile be. But let's say on the left-hand side, you say, that's the profile we want. We want someone creative, we want someone really logical, who's assertive, you know, high sense of urgency, blah, blah, blah. You take all your candidates, you have them take this assessment, and it basically force ranks them based on the analytics and the algorithms and all of those things. Say, these top are your better match, and this bottom one is not a match at all. And some people look at that and say, well, that had to be obvious. It wasn't. I was working with a client. That's the profile they wanted. That person was their top candidate internally. Not really a recipe for setting that person up for success. So this is a tool in the toolbox. It is not the final, final who you should hire. But it'll help you determine who has the drive, who will wake up every morning with the drive to do that job, not, I can do that job. That's the difference. So that's one of the tools that we'll use. I want to set a realist expectation. I didn't tell Lon I was putting this up, so I hope that's okay with him. But in full disclosure, almost every person I talked to, almost every survey I received, when I said, what's going well? The comment was made that Lon just has this innovative way of just figuring things out. Like, we're all going, I'm not sure what to do here. He is a unicorn. And his originality of thought is a ten out of ten. And what that means is, the chance that you're going to find someone who has that personality trait at that level, this is less than one percent of the population. So some of you may say, thank goodness, because he made me crazy, right? But if you really love that about your current city manager, be mindful that the next one may not have that. There was also this trait of being very logical. So not only very creative, but what's the logical way we're going to do this? He has that as well. And then, this forward-thinking visionary, again, more of his attributes and his talents, and being able to see that big picture. Now, some would also say that Lon maybe delegated pretty well and the details just kept going. That was him, right? But if you want the visionary, forward-thinking, what's going on ten, twenty years from now, you probably will not get someone who's great at all of the details. They're just, they're competing traits. Now whoever you bring in may not look like this, but they'll probably have traits that are great as well. So I'm not just saying, gosh, you better set your expectations lower, because you won't, you're going to find somebody with different traits, and we'll put some strategies around the other things. So, but again, I had to set that expectation out there. He's very unique. Okay? All right. So here we are today. That green line represents the end of our meeting, where we have that alignment. The next step in the process is that we'll establish the selection process. I'll put together very specific interview questions and an evaluation form aligned with your job profile, so we can ask candidates very specific questions as it relates to that profile. You have hired an executive search firm. They're going to recruit and identify those candidates. And then, as part of the interview process, we'll use those interview questions, we'll make sure and issue assessments before you interview the candidates, so we know if they're aligned with what you're looking for, or what their struggles are going to be. So you have all of that information to make that final decision. The last step in the process, step number three, is onboarding. That's included with the proposal. Once you've selected that candidate, once they've said yes, I will sit down with the council and say, here's who you've hired, here are their strengths, and here are their struggles. Now let's figure out what strategies are needed in place. Here's a communication style that's going to work, setting those expectations before you go forward. Also, having that same conversation with the city manager as to how to communicate best with you, as well as with the leadership team. And then we'll take care of the leadership team as well, because whoever you bring in is going to look different than their former boss. So how do we set that up for success as much as possible? And then when new council member or members are brought on board, I'll sit down with them, explain this whole process, explain the job profile, explain who the city manager is, so we can kick that off on the right foot. So the last step for today, tonight, finalize that job profile. I'm looking for significant issues, not necessarily wordsmithing. We will be here until next Tuesday if we get into wordsmithing. On Thursday, tomorrow, based on this profile, I'll create the candidate profile, the one that I shared before. On Friday, Kirsten and I are meeting with your search firm, so we can do this knowledge transfer. So you don't have to meet with that search firm again. I'll give them everything that we've talked about, summarize this job profile, so they can hit the ground running. And then, if you're interested in learning more about this assessment tool, because it will be a key piece of this process, I can do a, you know, one hour, hour and a half overview to just dig into that a little bit further, so you can understand what that's all about. So we'll come up with a time on that day, if you're interested in doing that.
On that point, having that orientation to the assessment tool, is there any written information as an alternative to that that could be consumed?
No.
Okay.
And if that date doesn't work, and people are interested, we'll come up with a new date.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I have a book. You could read the book. That would help. Seriously, I wrote a book. So it's on that particular topic.
He will outline it. He will outline it for us.
You already found it on Google.
That's right. It's on Amazon. Okay. All right. So with that, that's the whole presentation. Thank you so much for letting me get through all of that. We have about twelve minutes left. What questions do you have for me?
All right. Let's do this in an organized way. Just raise your hand, or who has a question? Go ahead, Steve.
One question that kind of jumped out at me was, as you're going through the job profile, and under the experience qualifications, the first one, where it talks about, you've got proven and successful city management experience in a high-growth urban city, preferably with a sixty K population. So if we talk about that aspect and a sixty K population, obviously, we're not talking about getting the city manager from that city. We're talking about getting somebody that reports to that city manager. So am I correct in that assumption?
That's not the way I wrote it. That's not, that wasn't my intention. The intention was that they have city management experience, and it's preferable that it's with a city that has more than sixty thousand in population.
Okay. So if you're talking about, do you really, are you writing that in a manner to, that we're going to try to attract a city manager from a larger city to come to a smaller city? That's, so, or are you really saying, we're going after the deputy city manager of a larger city? I mean, I got a follow-up question, because that's a key aspect, I think, on who we're looking for, who we're targeting. Are we looking for the number one guy or person coming over? Or are we looking for number two wanting to move up?
Yeah. So I think, the way it's written, you could have a couple different options. Number one, Number one, someone who has that experience in a growing urban city, period. Now, if you have experience in a 60,000-plus, you know what more complex looks like, whether you're the deputy or you're the city manager, we would consider you as well.
Well, that's my follow-up question, because if you could, if you're gonna define it as a deputy city manager wanting to move up, I certainly understand that aspect of it. But then, that individual has not had to be in a position where they've had to demonstrate all the skill sets and experience that we're looking for. So they haven't, maybe had to be, if I asked them the question, tell me about a situation in time in which you have come up with a very innovative solution or recommendation, guess what? Gee, I'm the deputy city manager, that's the responsibility of the city manager to do that stuff. So, so, you know, I, I think, how are you gonna get through that, the weeds of that? If, you know, you know where I'm getting at? So are you going after number one? And when you put a 60K aspect of that, are we really, is it okay to look for a city manager that's from a, more of a high-growth city, less than 60K? Could be comparable, could be 30K, somebody maybe wanting to get back to the Midwest. Something like that, but, you know, the 60K, all of a sudden, if you put that on there, it, it, it just tells me, you're not gonna get the number one guy, you're gonna get the number two person. And then how do you really evaluate what we're looking for, for all of these aspects of this job profile?
Yeah, so that's why we put preferred. We would still have that out there, and we're trying to open the candidate pool. And that's, you know, quite frankly, that's a big reason why you hired the search firm. Their, their goal, and I haven't talked to them yet, but I'd be surprised if they just put a posting out there and cross their fingers that the right people applied. They're going to go out and actually start mining those candidates, telling the Marion story. And before you would ever have an interview with them, we would make sure that they had enough proven experience that you wouldn't ask that question, and they're gonna look at you with deer in the headlight. Does that make sense?
Yeah, still not sure how you're gonna do it, in that, in that specific aspect, though.
Yeah.
I mean, again, number one, two person versus number two, I mean, there could be a huge difference. I mean, when we hired Lon, he was the city manager, albeit at a, a smaller city, a much smaller city. So that was a jump up at a city manager level. So, somebody else jumping up at a city manager level. Again, years of experience, I agree with your comment, that years of experience is not as critical as what type of experience do you have, because, you know, somebody who's wanting to move up from another city, moving up to this one, looking at an opportunity, and so on and so forth, again, that could be coming from both aspects, a deputy city manager from a larger city, or a city manager maybe from a little smaller city, so.
So if you were to change that, what would you change that to? Is it the 60 that is, is causing the concern?
A little bit, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think you're putting on something there that, I know, I know you're not saying it's required, you're talking preferably, but all of a sudden, I think you might be missing some good candidates that are in a rapidly growing,
Smaller city.
Smaller city than 60K.
Okay.
Guess what? We were there, we were there 15 years ago. And so I know we're better, bigger today, but still, you know, just, what, again, so, that piece of it is probably,
High-growth urban city, I think, is the key.
Rather than the population.
Rather than the actual number.
But, yeah. Maybe that would be the,
Okay.
I think there's a big difference on, I'd rather,
Am I hearing you correctly, that you prefer that we just take that off and just be mindful of what size city?
There's other people too, I mean, does anybody disagree with that, or?
I don't, I think that sounds good. I like that point. I think it's a very important point.
So again, just to clarify, are you looking to take that whole off? Or is it the number that you want to change?
I would probably take the preferably, the 60K,
Okay.
Population off. The line above it is absolutely essential. You know, proven and successful city manage, management experience. Again, could be coming from a city manager level, could be coming from a deputy city manager level. And all of a sudden, the city size comes into play on both of those aspects. So the, the 60K, I'm just thinking, might be handcuffing us more than what we want to do.
And just as a, as a explanation, it's just that whole level of complexity, that you don't know what you don't know until you've done it. And so that's, you know, we just need to be mindful of that, anybody coming in, have they operated at a bigger level? But we can certainly do that without having to put it in here.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, thank you.
I'm all, had a, had a comment.
The goal here is to make sure they have experience dealing with growth challenges. And I think, in the profession of city administration, it doesn't matter if you're a city manager or deputy, if you're in a profession, you'll be exposed to the challenges, and you are aware of the strategies. We up, we operate as government, and all this vision and strategies are discussed, and, and challenges with management as well. So, the goal is to have a person who's exposed to those kind of challenges, and been through it, preferably.
Yeah, I agree with that, and that's all, I think, covered in the first line.
Okay, thank you.
Adequate, very adequately, and, and very succinctly.
And in the process of going, you know, calling through the candidates, I mean, you could certainly use that as, as a way to weed people out. You know, based on the size of the city, the challenges they may be, they've been through and experienced, those kinds of things. So, I mean, I, I see taking it out as, as opening it up.
Okay.
So you don't miss maybe that really stellar candidate, that maybe in the city, another city of 40,000 or 30,000, or, you know, that's growing really fast, and who might be, who might, when you look at everything else, you think that they're perfectly capable of handling the complexity and all that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes.
So I agree with the conversation that has just unfolded. And I think you had said when you were describing that, the significance of being able to function in a more complex organization. So the question is, as we evaluate the candidates, in addition to our own assessment against this qualification element, will we be looking to the public record that is contained in LinkedIn? References and comments and support that has been, you know, documented within LinkedIn? As well as, to what degree do we evaluate and put weight on personal references that they might then submit, which might illuminate elements of this first?
That's all part of the due diligence process. So, you know, there's, there's more that, from a regulation perspective, you know, there's ADA compliance, and there's background checks, and all of those things that need to be done as well. So Kirsten has a whole list of those things that will need to be done, right? References will be checked, and I'm sure that's all part of the search firm, that they take care of all of that, so, thank you.
Renee has a comment.
Thank you. Two additions if people agree, and then a question. So the purpose of the role and why it exists, I'd like to add an ending to what we have, that says, through a lens of fiscal responsibility and transparency. I think it's really important, because it's taxpayer money, and we are a public body, that we do want the sustainable high quality of life and economic success, but I think that we always need to be cognizant that we're talking about money that comes from the residents, a lot of it, anyway, and then just the transparency piece, because we're a public body.
So could you repeat that?
Yeah, through a lens of fiscal responsibility and transparency, if, if that's okay with you.
Anybody opposed to that? Anybody thinks that that's, that's not a good idea?
To the end of purpose, purpose of role and why it exists, it starts with ensure that the city Mary, yeah, through a lens of fiscal responsibility and transparency.
I think as long as we define transparency, that, that to me is the key. Because when I hear transparency, it's responsible transparency, and it doesn't mean every single book is opened, every single personnel file is opened, every single, and that seems incredibly obvious to most people, but not to everyone. So, we just need to be mindful and careful how we, how we articulate that.
I'll leave it to you. I just want some language to that effect, because of our responsibility, and, and what we tell the community for whom, you know, we're asking for their vote, what we are going to do. And so I think it's incumbent upon us, for the one employee that we do have, that we're making sure that, through their vision, this is being accomplished. So, I mean, feel free to change the verbiage, but I do feel strongly that we need that kind of language in the purpose of the role.
Okay. How's everybody else feel about that?
Steve, you look like you're thinking.
Well, again, I'm, I'm thinking about the transparency verbiage. That is a heck of a big word with an awful lot of stuff behind it, that has a different definition and expectation for lots of different people. I mean, the city manager is not gonna be fully transparent in every, transparent in everything that he or she does. Cannot, should not, but there's gonna be certainly, I mean, I understand Renee's aspect,
Right.
is there are certainly areas expected to be transparent as it relates to city government. But everything that a city manager is gonna do is not and should not be fully transparent.
Right.
That's my concern about that word.
Let me take that away, and I, I understand the spirit of what you're saying. I want to be careful that we don't set an unrealistic expectation with certain people who would think, okay, that means you, and I, I don't think this is your intention, but that you open the books. I mean, there are just certain things legally and just responsibly. I've been down this path before, so that's why it's, it's, it's a nerve for me, where people say, well, you weren't transparent. Well, certain things, you know, that shouldn't be shared. It's not appropriate, it's not legal, it's all of that, so.
Yeah, and I'm not suggesting we do something that's not legal, or that should remain confidential, or that we reserve for closed sessions, and that kind of thing. But I do think that, for this, you know, again, the face of the community, very public role, in a non-elected position, that, that the community sees that what we're looking for is someone who, when they can, obviously, share what they know and be communicative, and,
Yeah, I, I think the spirit of that is that it engenders trust between city government and the community, that, you know, the, the things that they should be made aware of, they're made aware of, and that it's clear, and that it, it's easy to get information and those kinds of things, to, to, to engender that trust between city government and, and, and the community. So maybe there's a, and, and I agree with what, with what Steve's saying, the word itself, transparency, is interpreted a million different ways, and it, it comes with so much baggage and so much, that, you know, maybe there's a different way to state that, but I, I think that's probably the spirit of what Renee's saying.
I'm not married to that word, but something with the spirit, I think, should be in there. Because a lot of people will be watching this process, it's big, you know?
Sure.
It's really big, we, we do, like you said, this is the most important decision we'll make.
So, yeah, I mean, you know, we've worked very hard to, and I for one, and I think all of us have, to, to create that atmosphere in the city, if we're all on the same team. We're all going, you know, we're all working for the same goals, we want our city to thrive and all that, and we don't, you know, I think that that does have to come from the top, in terms of instilling that, and, and doing the things that, that, that promote that atmosphere in the city. Instead of distrust and, you know, suspicion and all that.
Yeah, and I'll defer to whatever you come up with, as long as there's something, I think we've talked about it enough, that you probably have a good idea of what I'm after, or what I think everybody's okay with. The second thing is quick, the city council management, you asked for another term, I like engagement, so maybe that works. Yeah, something, but I'm, management, I cringe.
City manager doesn't manage the city.
No, no, he or she does not.
It could be relationship management.
Sure.
Something about the relationship, or, or, I mean, it's actually, the, the position, is one of the, one of the councils, one of the, gee, the group that the city manager, I, I mean, I don't want to misuse the word serve, but, you know,
Right.
That's part of the role. And it's really more relationship management, engagement, those kinds of things.
Thank you, I appreciate that, because as I was finalizing this this morning, I went, I, this is,
I, I'm glad, Renee, you introduced that, because I know there was a, a sort of a buzz of enthusiasm from the back of the room here this evening about city council being managed, so.
Yeah, yeah, and just to be clear, I, I prefaced it with, I think there's a better word out there that,
You did, and that, and I wrote it down, I'm like, all right, she gave me permission to suggest. And I just have one other thing, and it's a question, on the experience qualifications, technical requirements, education, the critical thinking to diagnose, how do we measure that? Do we do an IQ test? Does the firm do that? What, what tools do we use to assess that?
We have some tools that are included in this process. That, part of it, you can get through the personality assessment, but we also have a cognitive test that we can have them take as well.
Okay, terrific, that's all I have, thanks.
Great.
Okay, what else? Any other specific, yeah, go ahead.
So, in the business relationships section, constituents, and what is described there is essentially an escalation path. I guess the question is, isn't, under some set of scenarios, the last step in an escalation path potentially the city council?
Essentially.
And I, I, so I guess in this profile, I don't know whether it's value-add or not, to add some language to indicate that, under certain conditions, that escalation path may terminate with the city council. I don't know, it's, certainly the city manager has to be that person, but if it's unresolvable at that level, then there is only one more stop.
Right, and this isn't setting a policy, this is setting an expectation that, I'm just pulling an example out, if, if somebody doesn't like their garbage pickup, you don't, it would go through that chain, and that was probably a horrible example, but the spirit of it is, it goes through a path, and that would be the final, that would be the next step of the appeal. Obviously, if you have a policy that says, no, the final appeal is with the council, and that's fine. Okay.
I just have one, on, under vision and strategy, the first item, it says, understand the needs of the community. Should it say, understand the needs and priorities of the community? I mean, it's really that the community's priorities that we're serving, not, not our own. It's there, it's what the community, you know, if it's maintaining the historic character of, of the city, or if it's, it's those big-picture kind of priorities of the community, of what they want for their quality of life, what they want. I don't know, it's just a thought, if anybody agrees with that, I mean, there are needs.
What are you suggesting I missed?
Needs and priorities of the community.
I like that, because priorities ties into our strategic plan that we identify and spend a lot of time and money on, so we've,
Where people want to see their city head, you know.
So this, the, the spirit of this was, this is the first step in setting the priorities for the, the community. So the, really, kind of the first step is, understand the needs, and you get that through the collaboration of the leadership. We don't want someone being a cowboy, and, I'm not talking to anybody, I just, I'm forwarding my agenda. So this is more collaborating to get, what are the needs? So, so, together, you can all create, what's the strategy and priority for the community? Does that make sense? Anything else? Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very, very much for your time. We will make these final tweaks, and we'll, we'll keep rolling on this to keep this moving along. And if, we'll have some kind of process that allows you to express interest in that personality assessment training. If you're so interested in doing that, we'll do something separate from this meeting. So, anything else, Mary Ann?
No, appreciate you engaging with us on this, and the work you've done already. I think, I mean, we, I'm all, I always, I'm proud of, of the council and the community of being all people who make well-informed, well-founded decisions that aren't based on just, you know,
all people who make well-informed, well-founded decisions that aren't based on just, you know, personal opinion, but they're well-researched, well-founded decisions, and this is just another step in that process, and I, and I, I love that we're being more methodical about this, and I think we're going to be happy with, happier with the end result, having gone through this. So appreciate your participation in that, I appreciate a bit of making time for this, it is an important process, and.
Yes, great, thank you for the opportunity, I really appreciate it as well.
And thanks, Kirsten, for everything you've been doing to shepherd this through.
All right, thank you again, have a good evening.
All right, thank you. All right, the meeting's adjourned.